Get buried in that wall. Get buried.
I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't think I'm on this view.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's March 21st, 2023 City Council meeting. Respectfully, we would like to ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's invocation.
Pray with me. Lovely heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered together. Bless each person present. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. We pray that this meeting is successful, productive, and blessed. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Give us wisdom concerning the issues that we face. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. Lord, we give you the glory for what we accomplish. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next item is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you to be able to avoid conflicts of interest. I assure you, any potential conflicts are going to be denied.
None. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. February 6th, 2023, City Council Special Meeting at our Legislative Breakfast, March 6th, 2023 Work Session, March 7th, 2023 City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Move we adopt the agenda.
Sir. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If any council member has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a resolution amending the interlocal regional geographic information system agreement between the City of Burlington, City of Graham, and Town of Elon. Item B, to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Burlington's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 1, Public Property, Section 4-1, Consumption on Public Property, to include the Carousel Event Center as a permitted location upon meeting permitting requirements. Item C, to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Burlington's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Personnel System, Division 7, Recruitment and Employment, Section 2-297, Limitation of Employment Relatives. Item D, to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of opioid settlements and approving the supplemental agreement for the additional funds between the State of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. Item E, to approve budget amendment 2023-30 for the allocation of grant funds awarded to the John Robert Cronotol Senior Center by Piedmont Triad Regional Council for the purchase of program equipment for outdoor programs, tables, landscaping, recumbent bike, and television at the senior center fitness room. Item F, to authorize the Burlington Police Department to submit a grant application to the BJA Physical Year 2023 Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program to support law enforcement agencies. And Item G, to adopt a resolution authorizing the disposal and sale of antiquated water meters through govdeals.com and authorize the purchasing manager to complete relevant correspondence. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
A move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is our public hearings. Under Item 1, Public Hearings, a public hearing has been scheduled for the City Council to consider an application to rezone property from light industrial LI to general business limited use GBLU. The property is located on the north side of North Meven Street, east of the intersection of South Graham-Hopedale Road and North Meven Street, addressed as 2002 North Meven Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 171022. At this time, we'll recognize our Planning Director, Jamie Lawson. Jamie.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, this is a request to rezone the property. The property is shown highlighted here in the teal. It is currently zoned light industrial, and the request is to go to a limited use in the general business zoning district. There are eight uses that are being proposed: multifamily dwelling, catering establishment, coffee shop, large format retail restaurant, indoor/outdoor seating restaurant with a drive-through or a drive-up service, restaurant with a walkout/walkup only, and retail use. The requested rezoning is consistent with the future land use designation, which calls for the area to be mixed use. So staff is recommending approval consistent with the future land use designation and shown in Option 1 in your consistency statement sheet. I can also introduce the applicant, Rob Sessions, who's in the audience, in case you have any questions for him specifically.
Can you blow that up, please?
So it's this property right here.
Thank you.
Yep, and here it is on the aerial.
I have a quick question on Jamie, Mayor. Good. Down at the, we got listed, it says retail use, and right after that is other. What does other?
It's just, it's a general retail use category.
It's retail, it's just other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. The use table has a lot of retail-specific uses in some categories, so this kind of captures those that may not be listed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions for Jamie? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on Item 1 on the agenda. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak? Lawson, please state your name and address for us.
My name is Seelo Fawcett. I live at 124 Fawcett Avenue, and thank you, Mayor, but letting council for letting me come before you this afternoon. I think maybe I'd be, maybe a little ahead of myself because I haven't heard what was going to go on the property yet, so I may have to hold my comments until we decide on what's going to go there. I was on the assumption tonight that it may be brought to the council what was going to go on that site from what I read in Alamance News a couple of weeks ago, that their proposed apartment complexes are going to go there. And if it's not coming tonight, I'll wait till when it comes on the next agenda to make my comments.
Well, I do believe that is one of the listed items that we are going to be voting on tonight, so this will be our final action.
Okay, well, I'll make my comments.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. As you all will know, we have done so much to revitalize East Burlington. We've spent a lot of money over there on that side of town to do this. If you look at, I was doing some research on some apartment complexes going in that area, and the applicants haven't really decided on what they're going to, how they're going to charge rent on these things. Because even you got low rent, you got affordable income, and then you got market value to pay for these apartments. So those might complain, but you know, again, we spend a lot of money, and we need affordable housing in Alamance, in Burlington. We really do. But the drawback that I find on this, how is it going to be built? You're going to have low income, you're going to have affordable rent, or moderate market value rents on these apartments. And it goes along, and I'm going to say what I'm going to say, and it's going to cover both items, hopefully I can do both items without having to come back again to do this today. But I want you to be aware of what's going to go there. Again, we need affordable housing, but what is it going to cost us for what we've spent in East Burlington already? If you see what I'm saying here, if you're going to, if the apartment complex is going to devalue the property in that area, then we need to look at it twice, I think. But again, it's a way to get affordable housing here, which our citizens need, but then again, there may be a price that we may have to pay for affordable housing going in that area of East Burlington. Again, please be aware that what's happened in East Burlington in the past years. So Mayor, thank you for letting me come before you, and that's all I have to say. But I don't want to come back and say the same thing on the next one, so just hopefully you keep that in mind.
Doodly recorded.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else from this side of the room that would like to speak? If not, anyone from this side that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I do have, that is one of the requested uses, is obviously a multifamily dwelling, but there are seven additional uses. Was there any, Jamie, was there any conversation about traffic impacts or anything like that? Is that even a consideration in the area?
That, so as you're aware, traffic impact analysis is not required as part of the rezoning request, so.
But it would be entering TRC?
If it, if it meets the thresholds, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Jamie, what's the street that's just south of this particular property?
This is Meven.
It's really off the beaten path, isn't it?
The, the property?
Yeah, make a left off of Graham-Hopedale Road.
You would, if you're coming, let's say you're coming out of the Walmart parking lot, it's directly across the street.
Right beside Wendy's.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's right beside the ABC Stores as well.
Yeah.
Is this, is this the developer who did the Bulls Creek, South Carolina project? Is that, is that you? That's what I want it to look like, just so you know. It's fair, I mean, if you go on their website, they have really attractive apartments that I think would attract anybody. I think that should, if you see that, Seelo, it should alleviate your.
Any other questions for the applicant or for Jamie? At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from light industrial to general business limited use GBLU. The property is located on the north side of North Meven Street, east of the intersection of South Graham-Hopedale Road and North Meven Street, addressed as 2002 North Meven Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 171022. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning from, with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have mixed use uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent commercial uses. This actual is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Sessions and Jamie, for that. Item number two, under public hearings, item number two, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider an application to rezone property from light industrial LI to general business limited use GBLU. The property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of South Graham-Hopedale Road and Hanover Road, addressed as 804 South Graham-Hopedale Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 172001, excluding the existing area zoned conditional industrial CI 784 and the portion located within the City of Graham's jurisdiction. Once again, we'll recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. So yes, this is a request for a limited use also. The request is to change the property shown here, highlighted in the teal. The request is to change the property from light industrial to general business with the limited use. There are two specific uses that are called out: multifamily dwelling and retail use. Other also, consistent here also is the rezoning with the future land use designation that calls for the area to be neighborhood commercial and also kind of split between neighborhood commercial and traditional residential. So staff is recommending this rezoning request as well, and it's included in Option 1 in their consistency statement sheet. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have for this one.
That where the car wash was located.
Maybe so, yeah. Yes, it is. Yeah.
I can pull up the aerial to.
Directly across from Fairview Child Park.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, right across from it.
Look like there are mold cars in there, there's a lot out there.
I am looking around to see, the applicant is here in the, Mr. Richard Angino is present in case you have any questions for him.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Angino. Thanks for being here. Any, any other questions? Any questions to Jamie or the applicant?
That's, that's a rather good-sized piece of property, is it not?
Seventeen acres and change.
And it's multi-jurisdictional, is it not? A piece is in Graham, is that right?
Yes, there's a cell tower. On a portion of it, and then the, kind of the carved-out area that's, that's shown here, that's within Graham, so that's not part of this rezoning request.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Jamie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing for item number two. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the audience that would like to speak on item number two? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item number two? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? We'll entertain a motion on item number two.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from light industrial LI to general business limited use GBLU. The property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of South Graham-Hopedale Road and Hanover Road, addressed as 804 South Graham-Hopedale Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 172001, excluding the existing area zoned conditional industrial CI 784 and the portion located within the City of Graham's jurisdiction. This motion is made upon the consistency of proposed zoning and the comp plan, future land use map section, and it's pretty obvious it's shown here, it meets the qualifications, the request is compatible with adjacent residential and commercial uses. The view, the action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Angino, for being with us this evening. I think to Mr. Fawcett's comments, those two areas and those potential projects there could really enhance. could really enhance the area, and I think Kathy is exactly right. If you go to the website, certainly for the one, you certainly will see some positive things. So it's good having everyone here, and thanks for being here. At this time, we'll transition into public comments. We have two signed up for public comments this evening. First is Mary Jensen to discuss grocery store regulations. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to discuss some issues pertaining to food availability in Burlington and helping to promote that. I wrote out what I wanted to say in advance, I'll be looking at my phone. So a food desert is defined as a census tract where in urban areas, one must drive at least one mile to reach a grocery store, and in rural areas, you have to drive at least 10 miles. According to this definition, the entirety of Alamance County, including the Burlington area qualifies as a food desert. And in fact, North Carolina rates among the top 10 hungriest states in the nation, with food insecurity at a rate well above the national average of 12.5 percent. Here in Alamance, the overall rates are 14 percent, with 19.7 percent of all children in the county being labeled as food insecure. So that's nearly one in five. I live a few blocks down the road from the elementary school on Davis, and some of the numbers there about the security of food for those children can be a little frightening. While discussing these issues with classmates during a rhetoric class in my college, I learned of a disturbing fact, which is that grocery retailers often take advantage of an outdated legal clause to intentionally create these areas with low food access in order to increase their own sales. They're called restrictive covenants, and it's a legal clause that exceeded modern day zoning laws. They first became popular in the 1920s, where they were often used to prevent people of color from purchasing certain properties. This was struck down in the 1960s as unconstitutional, but around that same time, corporate entities such as Walmart began to use the same restrictions to limit competition in their areas. Basically, whenever a grocery store closes down, it's standard practice for them to add a restrictive covenant to the deed for the land that prevents other grocery retailers from using that same property. They often also don't bother knocking down the storefront, and since nobody buys it through development because they can't put a store there, they often just leave these empty storefronts behind, which brings down property values in surrounding areas and impacts the crime rates. It also means that when a grocery store leaves a community, a new one can't be established to fill the community's needs, and the citizens are forced to travel further away to access food in stores in other towns. Also because it allows them to limit potential competition, it allows these corporate entities to charge higher prices for their food without worrying that other stores are going to steal them away with lower prices. And there are actually more than 200 locations in the United States where Walmart has so much control over grocery sales using these tactics that it violates antitrust laws. And all of this contributes to make fresh nutritious and affordable food harder to come by for struggling families. But in some municipalities, such as Washington DC, ordinances have been passed in these areas that rule these sorts of covenants as unenforceable because of antitrust issues and things like that. And a lot of other municipalities in the United States have followed suit since. And given the issues of food insecurity and how prevalent they are in Alamance County and the Burlington area, I would like to encourage the Burlington City Council to consider adopting a similar resolution for the area to help increase food accessibility for citizens.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
I know that's a lot, sorry.
It's all good, and I failed to mention, public comments are four or five minutes, so you did keep it under five minutes, so thank you. Much appreciated. Our next speaker is Cindy Perry, 259 Hillsborough Street, Pittsboro, 27312, concerned about a topic of water.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mayor and Council, I am Cindy Perry, I'm in my third term as Mayor of Pittsboro, and you have my address. Pittsboro is the first municipality downstream from Burlington's wastewater discharges, and we are suffering. We have been suffering for years, drinking polluted water from your wastewater treatment plant. We have high levels of PFAS in our bloodstream, higher than the folks in Fayetteville, below the Kemore's Plant, where the PFAS chemicals are manufactured. We have some of the highest levels of PFAS in the country, not just in the state of North Carolina, but in the country. In addition to our town water system, our well water, our well owners and our farmers are exposed to PFAS polluted sludge being spread on fields all around us. We in Pittsboro first learned about these unregulated chemicals in 2014, and now the federal EPA has recognized the health dangers of PFAS a carcinogen. Several years ago, we begged our upstream neighbors to clean up their discharges. I attended a Greensboro City Council meeting, where I offered them a drink of our water. Nobody took me up on it. Burlington and its industries continue to discharge and endanger our lives with toxic chemicals. Pittsboro spent $3.2 million for an activated carbon filtration system in our water plant, which removes some, but not all, of the PFAS, but does nothing about other toxins such as one for dioxine emitted in wastewater. Our small town of less than 5,000 people cannot spend millions of dollars to clean up your chemicals. Pittsboro and its citizens should not bear this burden to our health nor our budget. I understand that Elevate Textiles, Uniform, Unikim, and Sean Mutt have been identified as the three main sources of PFAS, and yet, what have you done about it in the years? You have not announced further actions? We have no communication from you? Burlington should be acting with urgency. It should mandate Elevate and others to stop polluting my community. Industries such as Elevate should not profit from its use of PFAS when we downstream and our families' health suffer. As Mayor, almost daily, I have to answer the question, how is the water? How much longer will we have uncertainty about our health hazards? And when will Pittsboro see relief? It's up to you. Would you like a sip? I brought cups.
I have, I have some Burlington water right here, I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Yep. That concludes our public comment period this evening. Any council comments? I do want to thank our city staff for the St. Patty's Day celebration, so I've heard some pretty cool comments. I was not in town, I think the weather was a little iffy, but I think we pulled it off all right. So, really good job, and we appreciate everyone's attention to that. Who had the weather anyway? It was about... It was Tony, it was Tony. Well, you gotta do better, Sam. Gotta do better.
It didn't start raining until he shut up.
It was pretty good, I came early, and the highlight that fascinated me was I saw a couple of people walking dogs right up the depot, and looked down, I saw this most unusual dog, it was a pig. Did you see the pig? I mean, I had to do a double take, you know, I saw, I was expecting another dog, but it wasn't a dog, it was, it was a pig, so. But if you came early, it was good. If you stayed later, you got wet.
We had a baby goat too.
Did you? Okay.
On a more serious note.
I enjoyed the evening myself, till the rain started. The, one of the rezonings, the first public hearing that we held, when I drove out there, we come to a dead end, and there's a gulch behind a shopping center that is just filled with trash, just really pretty disgusting. I'm just wondering if we can't contact that, the property owner for the shopping center to clean that up, and I don't think that's our responsibility.
Is that the backside on Meven Street?
Yeah, it is, it's pretty bad.
It's time to shop, go to shopping retailer, but it's really awful, and it's a very deep gulch, too, so it makes it difficult to get to. The newly society is sponsoring a litter pickup on, I think, the 13th of April, it'd be good for us to be involved in this, our citizens to do what's best. Lease around their own properties.
And that's when, the 13th?
I think it's the 13th of April, somebody.
Yes.
Let's all put that on our calendars, and I think that's a great idea, to send the property owner a letter, see if we can get that addressed, and maybe even a visit. And sticking with a serious note, certainly, I think it would, we'd be remiss if we didn't say that our council takes any of our municipal neighbors very seriously and their needs. And I know David Huffman's been working very close for many years.
Since 2019.
Since 2019, on water supply and what we can do to assist our neighbors downstream. And, you know, the, the impact is more comprehensive with Vinfast, that's probably going to be a bigger problem, and some things looming from the development standards. But certainly, we're, we're in constant contact and communication to try to improve the system, and as regulations certainly start unfolding, and it becomes more clear of what we can or cannot do. But right now, it's in legal's hands, and David, we appreciate you taking the lead on that. And I'd be remiss, I don't want anybody to think we turned a deaf ear to that, so. There's been a request to enter into closed session, at this time, we'll recognize our city attorney, David Huffman.
May I have a count by action, go into closed session at this time, pursuant to 142, CBS 143, 318, 1185, considering given instructions concerning the handling of settlement claims and judicial actions named Randy Donbitt versus City Burlington, captured on the Astro, and we enhance a pure court case 22 CBS 788. But also ask the counsel going to closed session pursuant to 143, 318, 1185, to consider the purchase of real property. One, the first property is a three tracks of land currently owned by the town of Gibsonville, located in Guilford County, just across the Guilford County line off Highway 61 south of the interstate. Corso 1, ID number 103145, approximately 60.02 acres, referred to as 1690 Wheeler Bridge Road. Corso 2, 103948, approximately 69.65 acres, referred to as 1690 DZ Wheeler Bridge Road. And the third corso is 103113, approximately 29.2 acres, referred to as 1736 Wheeler Bridge Road. You will recall that all three of these tracks are in the Lake MacIntosh Watershed critical area, and subject to state water shed restrictions. We recognize that two of these tracks, Corso 103145 and 103148, are already in, utilized by the City of Burlington, they are in Guilford-MacIntosh Park, and use, we have trails on them. And along those lines, the public purpose of this purpose would be to parent the Lake MacIntosh Watershed, as well as continue to use as the portion recreation name of the trails. There's another corso of land, it's in Alamance County, it's identified as one, Alamance County Corso, ID 149697, located off of Ruby Lane Road and Home River. This is a .69 acre corso situated adjacent to the U. L. wastewater treatment plant, as well as a Burlington Energy, as well as Duke Energy Substation, and all that dised out the street from the Bronx and Hammond Shelter. This is currently owned by Mona Elska Cutlin and Kathy Elska Detzler, both of Elizabeth, West Virginia, and this track will be utilized with the purposes of a buffer for our East Plan, as well as the map to the statewide trail back.
So there's been a request to go into closed session for the items stated under appropriate general statutes, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All right.
Could you read all that again?
Could you read all that again?
Motion to enter back into open session.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Obviously, under discussion, one of the items was to acquire three properties from the town of Gibsonville located in Guilford County, parcel ID 103145 of approximately 60.02 acres at 1690 Wheeler Bridge Road, parcel ID 103148 of approximately 69.65 acres, 1690 ZZ Wheeler Bridge Road, and third is parcel ID 103113 of approximately 29.2 acres referred to as 1736 Wheeler Bridge Road. This time, we'll entertain a motion on the recommendation to purchase those properties.
No move.
Second.
So, we have a motion to purchase those properties. David, you want to read the dollar amount into that?
Mr. Ray, that would be $1,600,600 for those 158.87 acres, and there will be a budget amendment if you're ready before me.
Okay, is that motion sufficient? And second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item number two was a real property purchase, Alamance County parcel ID 149697, which was located just off of Ruby Lane in Hall River. This is a .69 acre parcel. It's adjacent to our Burlington wastewater treatment plant as well as our Duke Energy substation down from the Shreveport Burlington Animal Shelter. So, I think my recollection on that is the .69 acre parcel was the recommendation to purchase for $10,000. At this time, we'll open the floor for a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, we've purchased the .69 acre parcel of land for $10,000 to be used as